My name is Dan Carney. It is, once again, my privilege to serve as the chairman of this meeting. And this is a meeting of the Board of Trustees, Weatherford College, being held on Thursday, July the tenth, twenty twenty-five, at twelve-thirty P. M. in the community room of the Emerging Technologies and Workforce Building located two-two-five College Park Drive, Weatherford, Texas, to consider and act upon a posted agenda. Present for deliberations with me here today are our longtime Secretary, Leela Morris, Dr. Robert Marlett, Mr. G. B. Bailey, Ms. Mary Beth Denny, and Mr. Tom Vick. I do call this meeting to order at this time. I call upon Brent Baker. Would you provide us with any indications?
Be happy to, sir. Please bow with me. Lord, we're very thankful to you for today. We're thankful to you for our college, for all the students you've brought us. Thank you for this time of renewal in the summer. Lord, we do want to give a special prayer to those who are suffering in central Texas. Please give them the peace that surpasses all understanding. Thank you for our board. Please be with them as they deliberate today. In your name we pray. Amen.
Those who are able, please rise and join me as I decide to pledge allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Please proceed. Ms. Worley, do we have some individuals signed up as addresses today?
Yes, sir.
Thank you. I would note that the speakers who are here today, we have several. Please address your remarks to me as the chairman of the board. Our rules, as you might likely know, do not permit us to respond. That's it's not, your topic is not on the posted agendas, so we're not permitted to reply to anything that you might say. This is your opportunity to voice your opinion. The first person that I've been notified of is Ms. Patricia Hernandez. Ms. Hernandez?
Good afternoon. Thank you for your attention and the opportunity to speak, and we have Ms. Valerie Hopkins. During my experience at Weatherford College from August of twenty twenty-four through May of twenty twenty-five, I witnessed Ms. Val actively working to create an environment that was conducive to learning for all students, staffs, and instructors. She provided instructional support materials and hands-on demonstrations for students to increase their knowledge, understanding, and the fundamentals and principles of cosmetology. Ms. Val also modeled, mentored, all the instructors to increase their competency in teaching students all of the hair styling concepts, and interacting and supervising a large number of students. I watched as she worked tirelessly, dedicated her time, energy, attention, and, most of all, as many resources as she could provide to all the students so that we could have an opportunity to learn and grow. I am here today, but not alone, in stating that we are very appreciative of the experience that we were able to have because of her dedication, her commitment, and the leadership that she provided to the cosmetology program here at Weatherford College. I am also happy to share that with Ms. Val's guidance and support, I graduated from the cosmetology program here at Weatherford College. And since then, I have also completed all of the Texas certification requirements, so I am now a licensed cosmetologist, which I am very proud of to say. Please reconsider reinstating Ms. Val in her position in order that she may be able to have the opportunity to provide the benefit of her years of experience, her expert skills, and industry knowledge of the program, so that students like me can have the opportunity to go out and impact the cosmetology industry in a very positive manner. I appreciate your time.
Thank you, Ms. Hernandez. Appreciate it. Next person who's signed up is Christopher Moore.
Good afternoon. I'm Christopher Moore. I'm a twenty-two-year resident of Parker County. In two months, my business will celebrate twenty years of business here. For the first five years, we had problems getting good qualified talent for our school. That all changed, or for our salon, that all changed fifteen years ago when my wife and I helped get a young lady that we took in, Erin, into cosmetology. I met Ms. Val at that moment. Erin would come home from school, and she would let us know some of the drama and stuff that goes on in school. And I would assure her, I said, Erin, this is what it's like in our industry. Our industry always advertises flexibility, freedom, be artistic. Nothing about professionalism, nothing that you can be successful and have a career. Look at the commercials, the type of people it attracts. Ms. Val ran that program with an iron fist, one I appreciated. Not only did Erin come and join our staff, we also hired a young lady, Whitney Jordan, at the time Whitney Smalley, to come from there. The girls that I hired from that program, which by the way, I hire exclusively from Weatherford College, and I went to Ogil, I was hired from my alma mater. The ones that I've hired, if they're not with me today, it's because they have gone on and opened their own businesses successfully. When my daughter Madeline graduated high school early, she was a young graduate at seventeen, she wanted to join the family business. I was nervous. I didn't want to send her into their school. I picked up the phone, I called Weatherford College. Ms. Val assured me, she said she will tuck her under her wing and protect her, which she did. That she built a program, guys, that, it's incredible. We hire from you guys. That's it. If you walk in with an application with Fort Worth Beauty, Aladdin, something like that, just file thirteen immediately. Weatherford College, you get an interview. My daughter went through the program. She came out, she was ready to do hair, unlike some of the others. Why? The kids that I've hired from your college, they know sanitation rules back and forth. They're hard workers. They last in the field. I've got one right now that works two days a week. She told me the other day what she made, because I don't sound a paycheck, because I do have a wife that does that. She, she made over fifty thousand dollars last year on two days a week. The rest of the time, she could stay home and be a mother. She learned that right here at your school, under the direction of Ms. Val. I called Ms. Val because I was sitting there getting another student signed up that I talked out of going to Weatherford, I'm sorry, from Ogil. I told her, you need to go to Weatherford College. Sent her up there, she didn't get an interview. I called Ms. Val to ask why. She picked up the phone, she was crying. This was an hour and a half after she was terminated. She didn't tell me everything. She said that there were some false allegations. She wouldn't, she didn't tell me why. Didn't take me long to figure out what was going on. These kids talk, social media, there's other things. Guys, I can assure you, as everybody that works in my salon, that are graduates from this school, any allegation that was made were false. I understand that she was instructed to give hours to people that didn't earn them. That, that would shut this school down if that was allowed to happen. She said other things in the community, organize drives for homeless people and stuff. I personally have a friend that Ms. Val introduced Dave and I to a gentleman that was living in the Dollar Tree parking lot in a Ford pickup truck named Charlie Smitherman. Dave got him out of that, bought him an RV, and housed him. Charlie died at ninety-four years old, and his only family at his funeral was Dave. I forgot to tell Ms. Val that he passed. My friend Val was a head pro at thirty-three years at Colonial Country Club. Every time they'd get some no-it-all new manager in, general manager, tried to get rid of him. The board saved him every time. You guys can do it. I fear what will happen to the program and my pipeline, to new talent from my business, if y'all allow Ms. Val to leave her post here at Weatherford College. That's all I have to say. I hope you guys will hear me.
Thank you much. Next person who's signed up is Kylie Hopkins.
Hello. Sorry, I'm not very good at public speaking. I can take care of people for a living as a paramedic, but for some reason, I can't speak in front of people. Ms. Val is my mother, and I just wrote a little speech. Eighteen years of dedication, eighteen years of shaping minds, building programs, and helping launch hundreds of careers across two campuses, all dismissed in under one minute without dignity, without proper explanation of fault by brief and personal grief, but other employees full of empty policy talk. You can't say anything because of policy. Would you like a full-time job now? We'll take care of you, just like we did her. Interesting, after saying there had been no full-time jobs to be able to support this program, suddenly there's one, but at a length of cost replacing an eighteen-year employee that the community loves and is willing to work eight A. M. to nine P. M. for less pay and without warning, not to document those hours because, of course, we can acknowledge how much we truly ask for our employees. All of this over what? A leader who chose retaliation over resolution, a system that allowed it, and that's enough. And let's not pretend like policies mattered because they've only ever been enforced when they suit the agenda of those in charge. Actions, intentions, and injustices alike, not to distract the topic, but let's discuss things maybe the community could be proud of. Well, kind of depends on what you consider good. Please, my private paramedic, I don't think I want. So, an employee earning an estimated four hundred thousand dollars a year, roughly the same of our president of our United States, seems a bit excessive, especially considering this is over four hundred percent more than the salaries of employees who are keeping this college running every day. Did you know the employee that comes by and smiles at your hard work every once in a while makes that much? Do you feel supported by this institution? This alone raises questions about the financial priorities of Weatherford College. Let's talk about the brand-new, top-of-the-line Chevrolet costing eighty-two thousand dollars purchased for them, while facility and staff struggle for fair wages and appropriate pay for the title of the job where allocating school funds to actually transportation. Add that twenty-eight percent pay increase granted in twenty twenty-five, the twenty-five thousand dollar retention bonus, and one has to ask, is this college proud of spending this much money on one person instead of its educators and support staff? But let's move beyond financial decisions you can Google online. The unprofessionalism that has began to define this institution is concerning. I started my journey here, like I said, many years ago, to become a paramedic, a role often undervalued until you actually need us. Yet this program was routinely sidelined, underfunded, and even questioned in the importance whenever I was attending. Sadly, my instructor also left to go beat another college, and he was a wonderful, long-term employee. Not because of community need, but because it didn't align with the school's personal priorities. Meanwhile, sports programs and performance hall flourish with new pianos and polished facilities because they're the face of the school. When did we stop investing in what builds our communities? Careers in service, servicing the public like emergency medicine, hairdressers, grocery clerks, are the backbone of this society and keep this small town running. But when decision-makers prioritize appearances and prestige over purpose and service, it's not just a bad look, it's a failure of the leadership here. When did we start prioritizing appearances and fresh faces over experience and dedication? When did it become acceptable to let go of an employee with eighteen years of service whose dedicated time and brain power not only to the school but to the entire community? All of the free haircuts she provided on the weekends for kids, for nursing homes, for the underprivileged children, events for women in abusive situations that I was thankful to get to go to with her growing up. Will you keep those up now that nobody is here to care for those people? Are you going to make sure you hire somebody that will spend their own money to do those things for our community? At what point do we abandon the chain of command and policies we asked every staff member and student to follow? I remember signing those same policies a few years ago, but the ones that state concerns should be brought up through proper program leadership, not escalated to an administration who's never stepped foot into the role running that program, even for a day. We talk about integrity and professionalism, but actions like these reveal the opposite. A system or a decision are no longer based on truth, policy, or performance, but on personal agendas and selective informants. While I could spend hours expressing the heartbreak I've heard echoed by facility and students across multiple programs, five minutes would even begin to cover it. My only hope is that you take this message and reflect, not just on what's being said today, but on the deeper meaning behind it. The school should be a place people are proud to be a part of, a place of purpose, community integrity. That pride is fading, but it's not too late to restore it. I challenge you to listen, to lead with transparency, and to remember that the heart of this institution has always been its people, down to the people who work at Walmart, down to the people who do your hair. No, it's not so-called bendable policies, no, it's not appearances, but the educators and students who pour everything into it every single day. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. The next person I have in front of me is Veronica Eldridge.
I want to thank you for hearing me out. I'm not very good at speaking in front of people. I'm used to one-on-one. Fifteen years ago, I started at Weatherford College, and I was pursuing a different career. It didn't work out, I wasn't happy, I started the cosmetology program at the old location. I've idolized Ms. Val since I was in high school. I wanted to be like her, she was beautiful, fun, treated everybody so well. Everybody loved her. And I did get overwhelmed and didn't understand certain instructors' way of teaching. And she found a way to help me learn the way I needed to learn. And I became very successful. And since then, because Ms. Val was still in the program, I came back three years ago for the barber's program. And now, years later, I'm also starting another successful business. And if, I wouldn't be here if it wasn't for her. I have watched her, the way that she treats everybody, and I want to be like that. I've known her since I was in high school. And I can't imagine having a different instructor for this line of work, because she taught me that doing hair isn't just making people pretty, it's making them feel good about themselves. It's helping them unload about their day-to-day, the stuff that they can't tell other people, that they just need somebody to listen, whether it's male or female kids, my younger students that are coming out of Weatherford High School and the surrounding high schools, when they come to me and say, oh, I think I want to do hair. I point them to Weatherford College because it has done me so well because of Ms. Val. I don't really know what else to say. I, I'm not very good at preparing things, but I do know that something wrong has been done here. I don't know the story, it's not my business. But I know that if she wasn't at Weatherford College, I wouldn't have chose here, and I would not still be here doing hair. I was oil-filled previously. And over the oil-filled money, I chose to be here at home doing hair. Thank you for listening.
Thank you, Ms. Eldridge. The next person I have is Lynn Musola.
Good afternoon to all of you. I am so honored to be here, as once upon a time, I was an employee of Weatherford College that was way back in the eighties, and I worked alongside with Mr. Cates, Richard Cates, and I would give the GED on paperwork, which was old-fashioned, you know? Now we have computers, and the GED is done a different way. But they were special days, so that's where I fit in here. I have known Valerie for twenty-four years. In my heart, I have adopted her, because she has that spiritual well-being of a human being. I've seen her go out on a limb for people that probably some of you have not seen. I remember Ann Boiltz. She started and founded the cosmetology in Mineral Wells, Texas. I knew Ann, I knew Etta. Those two worked together impeccably. Ann said Valerie will make a good teacher, and that I can assure you, I will not have anybody cut my hair but Ms. Valerie. She's a good cutter and very good colorant, and her expertise to her students are remarkable. I stand here to all of you, and I highly recommend Valerie. She has a beautiful heart. Her family are amazing. Her sister Brittany, when my husband, a disabled vet, was in the nursing home at Hilltop, Brittany came to my husband, shaved him, bothered him, and I said, Brittany, how much do I owe you? She said, Lynn, nothing. This is the family that I recognize, her mother, her sisters, and her daughter, whom I've known since she was a little girl. And some of you on the board here I'm acquainted with, and, and very honored to have known you over the past years. So, you know, Valerie is deserving of her position. I have gone to some of her, her students who own their own salons in Weatherford, Texas, remarkable students. This girl is not here, Weatherford College is going to lose a really good beautician. I am from another country, I have beauticians in my family. Valerie is the top, the top in her field. She would be a great loss to this community as she runs that college, that classes, and wants it done the right way. Either you do it the right way, or my way, or, or the wrong way. You do it my way, there'll be success. And I've seen some successful girls who have graduated under Valerie Hopkins. This is all I have to say. I am honored to stand here before you all and say what I just said to you, because this is the gospel truth. However this is handled, it's not my doom. I just hope you touch your hearts and know what I'm telling you, because it is the truth. Thank you all.
Thank you, Ms. Musola. The next person who signed up is Rachel, excuse me, Kryczewski. I apologize about that.
Okay, I just want to preface also that I struggle a little bit with public speaking. I do hair, I'm not the best speaker. But I just want to say good afternoon. I also want to say that I attended the cosmetology program at Ogil when I first moved here to Texas seven years ago. It was because of Weatherford College that I took the opportunity to come back and become a barber, which I didn't know I wanted to do in the beginning. Due to a long line of coworkers and friends that attended the program here with Val, it's that I made the decision to come here specifically because Val was the instructor and she knew how to run the program. I just want to take a moment to recognize Ms. Val, who has been absolutely instrumental in my journey and success, that helped pave the way to further my career. Without her, I wouldn't be standing here today, not just as a licensed barber, but as a competent skilled professional who's ready to take on the industry. She didn't just teach me about hair, she taught me discipline, precision, professionalism, and pride in my craft. She pushed me when I wanted to give up, helped me accountable when I got off track, and celebrated every small win with me along the way. Her dedication went beyond the classroom. She cared about not only my growth, future, and who I was becoming, not just as a barber, but as a person who can flourish in an industry that can actually be extremely difficult. Because of her, myself and countless numbers of other students were able to believe in themselves and their capabilities. Because of her, I found a whole new passion in the industry that I didn't even know I had before. I truly couldn't have done this without Val's help and dedication to all of her students, myself included. From the bottom of my heart, Val deserves to carry on her title as a mentor and instructor. She shaped my future in such a positive light, and I will always stand by the unwavering fact that she loves her career and her students, and genuinely cares for the success of every single person who walks through the door. I firsthand have seen people's careers and livelihoods ripped out from their feet despite the long hours, dedication, compassion, and decades' worth of service. I truly, truly believe that this program will be providing a disservice to any student coming in that will not be able to experience Val as their instructor. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Next person I have, I'm sorry, I can't read the first, but it's Ann Holt. I didn't catch your first name, I'm sorry.
No, you're fine. It is Ruth Ann Holt.
Thank you, ma'am.
Yes. Good afternoon. I'm here today in regard to Valerie Hopkins and our affiliation with her. My name is Ruth Ann Holt, and I'm from Rock, Texas. In two thousand fifteen, my late husband and I moved from Baton Rouge, Louisiana, and the area, to Texas with our five children, ages eight to fifteen, for my husband to open the dental practice, and for my daughter's future in the equestrian circuit. But in two thousand sixteen, my husband died. In two thousand twenty, my daughter, Ruthie Love Holt, was nineteen years old, and she realized at that time that she must focus on her future and decide what trade would be best for her, and her future and her life, since they had drastically changed since her father's death. This is when she enrolled into Weatherford College Cosmetology Program, which then was located in Mineral Wells. Valerie Hopkins was her main instructor, and Ruthie Love is and was a very driven and focused young lady with a work ethic not many young ladies her age had and have, as she does to this day. Ruthie Love and Valerie understood each other and both worked very well together throughout her entire course of cosmetology. I was included in December twenty twenty to go with Ruthie Love's class to visit the elderly for our Christmas party, and Valerie and I began to know each other. I've never physically or personally gone out socially with Valerie, and in saying this, that does not mean I would not have enjoyed a dinner or a lunch together. But my life as a single mother with five never left me with the desire or the time to intermingle much at all outside of our home. I saw in Valerie a woman who truly gave her all to each and every one of her students because she wanted them all to thrive and do well for themselves. Valerie taught these girls work ethic, discipline, self-motivation, and the importance of getting up, presenting yourself not half-thrown together, but put together beautifully, out of respect for themselves and for the respect of their future businesses in the beauty industry. Valerie opened an opportunity for my daughter, Ruthie Love, to see not only building herself up as a real to see not only building herself up is rewarding, but how rewarding it truly is when a client is more self-confident and radiant because of her hairdresser's talent and people's skills. In 2023, Valerie had me come and teach her class about lashes as I'm an ambassador with Beam Light Lash and certified lash artist with Paris Lash. After receiving my Texas lash license in Dallas in 22, I received these other certifications. From my perspective, Valerie Hopkins has totally dedicated her life to her career. And as I know, she has truly given it her all when life can be so challenging and overwhelming. Valerie made such an impact in my daughter's life when life seemed beyond what tomorrow would be or what it ever would be without the help and the guidance of her father. Valerie was there for her and also for me being that my passion is teaching others the proper way to be an amazing lash artist and including me in the cosmetology department here at Weatherford College, teaching the new students the thrill of the lash industry. I thank you and I thank you for reconsidering Valerie's position with Weatherford College.
Thank you, ma'am. The next person I have is Heather Blackburn.
Thank you for letting me come and speak today. I graduated from the cosmetology department or program back in '23. And I am where I am today because of Ms. Val. She has been such a blessing in my life. I wouldn't be where I am without her. Her value to me as a student and since graduating, I couldn't even begin to describe. I remember distinctly, I guess it was probably my second week in school, not too far into the program, I felt extremely overwhelmed. And I went into her office and just flat out told her that I felt defeated because I didn't feel like I was succeeding very well. And she came alongside of me and made it possible for me to get through. She strengthened me. She encouraged me. She made it possible. She stayed late with me at times to help me be able to accomplish what I needed to do. If there was something that I told her I wanted to do, she would always come alongside of me and help me accomplish that. Her value to the other students, the salon that I work in, the owner of our salon was a student of Ms. Val's probably 11 to 12 years ago. I've got friends that I've been in church with, have worked with, they've done my hair. They were all students of Ms. Val. The salon that I work in now, I used to go when I was in high school to get my hair done. And I never thought, the thought never crossed my mind of me actually working there one day because I knew that I wanted to do hair, but I had still had some different ideas of things that I was going to be doing. And now I work in that very same salon under somebody who graduated from Ms. Val. And she still talks to this day about the impact that Ms. Val had in her life and career as a stylist. In the community, I hear people constantly all the time talking of the value of Ms. Val, not only as an instructor, but just as an example and role model in the industry. I'm also involved with a mission organization that goes around the world and works with children in sports and Bible camps. And I was just in Romania back in April. I've been to Romania twice and both times I've done hair in Romania and that started with Ms. Val. So her impact is not only in the community locally, it's around the world because I wouldn't be able to do that without Ms. Val. The negative result of losing Ms. Val would affect so many people. I can't imagine allowing somebody or something or some system to destroy her life's work and impact. Again, I'm so grateful for how she worked with me. She was patient with me. She, like I said, she encouraged me. There were countless times I felt overwhelmed and she lifted that burden each and every time. There wasn't a time that I couldn't go to her office and her door was open for me. And I've been a stylist now for about three years, so honestly, I'm still so new at it. I'm still learning things each and every day that I go in to work. And there have been countless times that I was at work and I didn't know what to do. And I'll be honest about that, even as a new stylist, I'm still learning. I pick up the phone, I call Ms. Val and there she is to, again, guide and direct me and encourage me. And she, at that point, she's not getting anything from me. I'm not paying her anything. I'm not paying anybody's salary. She's simply there for me as one of her past students. And there's not been a time since graduating that I couldn't contact her or reach out to her that she has not been there for me. And if it wasn't for her, I wouldn't have been able to accomplish certain things in the salon. I wouldn't be where I am today without Ms. Val. And so I just am so thankful for her impact in my life and our community, in the school. And it would be a terrible loss to Weatherford College to lose Ms. Val. So again, I appreciate the time and for your willingness to listen.
Thank you. Next person I have is Heidi Barnes.
Hello, I want to thank you for the opportunity to come and talk to you about Ms. Val. I personally was not a student of Ms. Val's, but my daughter was a student of Ms. Val's. And many of her now friends were students of Ms. Val's. I have to be honest, my daughter started out at a different college. It didn't work out the first semester. She came to Weatherford. She talked about signing up for cosmetology. I was totally against it. I wanted her to have a profession where I thought she could make a living. I'm from the Greece where Pinky Tuscanero couldn't make a living. But she went and signed up on her own without me knowing. Told me later that she had signed up. But from the first time I met Ms. Val, she was always so encouraging to my daughter, Audie. At the time that my daughter signed up, I know of two other people. So there was me, two of my friends, that their daughters went to a beauty school to be a cosmetologist. My daughter went to Weatherford, passed her test first time, no problem. Came back later, became an instructor. The other one went to Ogil, which was at least double the cost of Weatherford College. They failed. They went three or four times and never did pass the test. Another friend, their daughter went to Paul Mitchell, which is five or six times more expensive than Weatherford College. Their daughter is now doing blowouts because they never learned how to do cuts. But Ms. Val makes sure that her department was always beautiful, well-presented, and professional. She always leads by example. She's not expecting her students to do anything that she's not willing to do. She expects her students to arrive ready to work. They're not going to come and just try to get ready. She wants them to be ready to go. And if you look good, you feel good. She treats everyone with kindness. I mean, sometimes when people don't even deserve to be kind. I once, when my daughter was in school, witnessed someone being very rude to one of her students. In a very kind way, she went over and explained to this lady that these were students that were learning and escorted her out. And I was so proud of the fact that she took up for her students. She's always been accessible, not only to her students, but to her clients. If you've ever been around, you'll know that she's always there walking around to see how things are going, to make sure everyone's happy. She's gone through three campuses that I know of. When I first met her, she was in Mineral Wells. There was a temporary location that she went through. And then their current one, which is totally beautiful, something really to be proud of. And Ms. Val's reason, I believe that you can be, or one of the main reasons you can be very proud of that place. Val taught students during COVID. I can't imagine how difficult that could be to teach during COVID. She teaches not only the hair cutting part of cosmetology. She teaches every aspect from making appointments to getting along with your clients, to nails, to facials. When you come to Weatherford College, you're going to get a well-rounded education. And you're not only going to get a well-rounded education, you're going to be secure and competent in what you know. She, Val expects her students to clean up after themselves, to respect other people's belongings. A lot of these students, when they come to Weatherford College, are coming right out of high school. And so going into college, not really sure what's expected. But Ms. Val expects a lot and she gets a lot because I think whenever you expect a lot, you get a lot. Ms. Val makes sure that her students are ready for the licensing process. She makes sure that they're tested. She makes sure that they know their stuff. So whenever they go, they can be a success. Ms. Val knows that for much is given, much is expected. She has done many community outreach things, including free haircuts for the elderly, for nursing homes, for Christmas parties. The one thing I do want you to know is that people don't care what you know until they know you care. And Ms. Val cares. She cares about her students, her clients, the college, and her community. And Ms. Val would be a big loss to this college.
Thank you, Ms. Moore.
Thank you.
I'm sorry, Ms. Barnes, you spoke. Ms. Moore is our next person to speak. Madeline Moore.
Hi, I'm Madeline Moore. I'm a former student at Ms. Val and I have also had the privilege of working alongside her this last year. A little about me, I was homeschooled. I graduated a year early. And I wanted to be a hairdresser ever since I was three years old. So I was ready to jump into the cosmetology program. I finished, I was a COVID baby. So once I finished the cosmetology program, Ms. Val encouraged me to finish my associate's year at Weatherford. I did that while working part-time in the salon. And then I went on and got a job in Dallas for a product development company, part-time as well. So still working behind the chair. And that job has taken me all over the world, which has been really fun and cool. But all of that wouldn't have happened without the training I have gotten from Ms. Val. Her commitment, her dedication, she's the most genuine person I've ever met. She is so hardworking. It baffles me every single time you could come here or you could have come here and you would catch her. And at any hour, you wanted to stop in almost. She was here from morning to evening. She was doing everything she could to help students succeed the best they could. This program is not an easy program. I have clients come in talking about their kids wanting to start the program or maybe they're wanting to start the program. And I tell them, I say, this is not an easy program. This is Ms. Val. She's tough, but she does everything out of love. And it's a tough program, but you leave ready to be in the workforce. You leave ready to take stakeboard and pass with flying colors and not have a whole lot of nerves when doing so. She, again, it just is amazing how she dedicates her life to everybody else. She puts very little time for herself and it's for her students, it's for strangers, it is for everybody. She is one of the kindest, biggest-hearted. She put on the drives for the nursing homes and loves on all of the elderly who may not have family, who there are love on them all the time. She is, it would be a big loss to lose her and the impact on her family or on her students who feel like family. And everybody loves her. She's so kind. So anyways, thank you for letting me speak and speak about how amazing she is.
Thank you, Ms. Moore. That concludes our section on public comment for today. Next item on the posted agenda is the president's report. Dr. Farmer.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Mr. Chair and members of the Weatherford College Board of Trustees, I would like to give a few brief recognitions, employee notices, and an enrollment update. Recognitions. Congratulations to Weatherford College Team Roper, Caston Widenbiner, who won a national championship from the College National Finals rodeo in Casper, Wyoming in team roping. In its distinguished program history, the WC rodeo team has produced five individual national champions and one women's team national championship in 2022. From the Golden Bells of the 1970s to the Gold Dusters of the 1990s, Weatherford College welcomes the return of our official WC dance team, the High Steppers. The High Steppers will debut during WC's Connections Week, a college-wide welcome-back event for faculty and staff, followed by appearances at the campus cookout, athletic games, and additional community engagements throughout the year. Beginning in the 2025-2026 academic year, the WC Foundation is launching the Weatherford College Patrons of the Arts Society. The society is the brainchild of Rebecca James, the college's Chair of Fine and Performing Arts. She made a presentation to the WC Foundation Board in the spring and received an enthusiastic response. Employee notices. DMAC Local requires the college president to provide the names of contract employees that have resigned since the last board meeting. Dawn Caldon, Director of Student Pathways, resigned effective 6/16/25. Jennifer Livinggood, Testing Assistant, resigned effective 7/10/25. And Angie Ellis, a Workforce Specialist, resigned effective 7/10/25. We thank Dawn, Jennifer, and Angie for their service and wish them the very best in future endeavors. Enrollment Report. As of July 7th, the summer 2025 year-to-date enrollment was 2,395 students compared to 2,211 in the summer 2024 semester, an increase of 8.3%. The fall 2025 year-to-date enrollment is 4,589 students compared to 3,228 students in the fall 2024 semester, an increase of 42.16%. While we predict the fall enrollment numbers to be artificially high due to early enrollment efforts, we do anticipate all-time record-high enrollment in the fall 2025 semester. Mr. Chair, that concludes the president's report.
Thank you very much, President Farmer. Item number four on the posted agenda is the consent agenda. The financial reports, items A through G, which are properly posted considerations. Is there any member of the board that has a question, comment, or observation about anything on these?
I had a question about the bus contract. Is that just in case our bus that we just bought, we have two teams going at the same time or something? I mean, why do we need the contract when we just bought a bus?
President Farmer?
Yes, that's exactly it. We have multiple sporting events simultaneously and so we'll send our bus first and foremost. But we do have multiple events going on at the same time. And we've got our athletic director, Jeff Lightfoot, here with us today, our new athletic director that we're so proud of. Do you have anything that you would like to add to that?
Yeah, we have several occasions where seasons overlap. Basketball overlapped with baseball and softball at the same time and it's not uncommon, especially when you get in conference play and we have games on Wednesday and Saturday. We may have three teams on the road at one time. So the bus has been awesome and it's saving us some money in a lot of areas. But we do still have need other transportation as well.
It's a good insurance policy for us. Thank you very much. Any other questions or comments from any board? Do I have a motion to approve the consent agenda and financial reports in its entirety? Dr. Marlet, a second from Mr. Bailey. All in favor, would you please raise your hand? All in favor, would you please raise your hand? Appears to be unanimous. Thank you very much. Item number five on the posted agenda is a consideration in possible action on proposals for sale of 45.682 acres of vacant land in Weatherford, Texas, RFP 0825. Dr. Cantrell, can you tell us about this?
I sure will. We sent the specs out with these proposals, and we showed it in the different plaques that have been showed and the appraisals that have been received for and passed as options. We received only one proposal on the 5.063 acres that we had presented before to you all. That amounts to $276,550, $15 per acre, and that was less than our two-year-old appraisal. So we are recommending, it's the administration at this time, that we reject that bid and seek further.
Do I have a motion that the board trustees reject a proposal of $1,400,000 submitted by Woodmont Company for 5.063 acres of vacant land on West Beatty Field or Road? Do I have such a motion? And do I have a second? Thank you, Mayor Beth. All in favor of that motion, raise your hand. Appears to be unanimous, the motion is approved. Item number six, consideration in possible action for an order authorizing the issuance of Parker County Junior College District Consolidated Fund Revenue Bonds Series 2025. Appointing a pricing officer and delegating to the pricing officer the authority to approve on behalf of the issuer the sale and delivery of the bonds, establishing certain parameters for the approval of such matters by the pricing officer, approving the form of a paying agent registrar agreement and other related matters. Once again, Dr. Cantrell, tell us about this.
Yes. We started about a year ago seeking financial advisors on this project that we're all anticipating to begin this fall. We sought proposals, and Hilltop Securities were our chosen financial advisor to work with. We have with us today Jason Hughes. He's going to present at this time to the board on the parameters of the bond.
Mr. Chair, members, Dr. Farmer, good to be with you. I should also point out Tanya Haskins, my partner at Hilltop Securities, is also with me. She's in the very back there, but certainly want to recognize her. So as Dr. Cantrell pointed out, back in August of last year, we came before you for the first time, and at that point, we talked about the issuance of revenue bonds for approximately $100 million. We talked about the new fees and some increased revenues that would help pay for that, and we also talked about talking with the banking agencies. So what we're asking for your approval today is really the first step and the culmination of that process, and I'll go through and talk about exactly what that means. So just as a reminder, the vast majority of that $100 million would go to fund that new student center. And so this goes there, just kind of talks about what's anticipated, five-story, 110,000 square feet, substantial completion by fall of 2027. So that, again, is what we were looking at whenever we started putting together the finance plan. What we're specifically asking for your approval today is what's known as a parameter bond order. And so let me take a step back. There's a couple of different ways, whenever you go out to sell debt, that you can actually approve that, because ultimately, we have to have your approval to sell bonds. We can price in the morning and come to you as you're board meeting. Obviously, as you know, your board meetings start at 12:30, so that kind of puts a little bit of a rush on that. If there is a situation where the market is kind of dragging, which it has been doing that as of late, that could mean that we'd have to kind of really push that and might not get optimal pricing. The other way that you can do that is through the approval of a parameter bond order, which, again, is what you have in front of you today. What that allows us to do is you effectively pre-approve the bond issuance, certain or subject to meeting each and every parameter, which I'll go through. Assuming that we can do that, then we can price those bonds at any time. So the main thing is, it just gives us flexibility. It allows us, whenever there's periods of market volatility, like what we've seen, or we had substantial issuance in the market, which we've also seen recently, that it allows us a way to price these bonds, again, effectively. So just to very quickly go through some of the volatility that we've seen, that kind of pale gray line going back to the first part of January, whenever we saw the market kind of open back up after New Year's, Christmas, et cetera. We actually had drifted down a little bit in rates, and then go back, if you think about that first part of April to mid-April, whenever tariffs were announced, things of that nature, we saw an increase of about 60 basis points, that's just six tenths of a percent, to almost 80 basis points, or eight tenths of a percent. Six tenths and eight tenths does not sound like a lot, but in my world, in Tanya's world, that is an absolute huge movement in a very, very short period of time. You go, the nice thing is, though, now, you can see we've regained roughly about half of that bag, so rates have actually come back down. But again, just to highlight the volatility that we've seen in the market. Passing a parameter bond order, again, helps us combat that. So again, what we're asking for your approval are the parameters in here. The maximum par amount is $110 million. We did put that a little bit higher than the $100 million, just for the simple fact that if interest rates go a little bit lower, if we can optimize or maximize the amount of proceeds, if we can get to the college, we'd like to be able to do that. The maximum rate is a 5.75%. I will tell you, we've been modeling out at about 5.25%. If we were to price today, we'd be closer to 5%. So those are all nice things that we have working for us, and again, we'll hope to be below that 5% level. Final maturity that is within the parameters that we're asking for your approval is August 1st, 2055. These would be 30-year bonds, again, maximizing the amount that we can get from that bond sale. And then assuming that you pass this today, and let's say that two weeks from now, rates spike up, we can't meet the parameters, this delegated authority is good until January 6th. So we do have a period of time. We don't expect it to take that long, but that does give us roughly that 180 days. And then again, effectively, what we're asking for you to do is delegate your pricing authority to the pricing officers, that is, or those are Dr. Farmer and Dr. Cantrell. The last thing that I would go through is just the calendar that we have here. So we did meet with S&amp;P, who currently rates you. You have a double-A credit rating, which is very hot with them. But given the size of this bond issuance that we're talking about, we also met with Bich and Moody's in person. So we were hoping that we would have news to bring back to you, but at this point, they both have asked for a little bit more time. So we will come back to you and report on that once we get the credit ratings from them. So again, what we're asking for your approval today is approval of the bond order. And then what we're anticipating is roughly that week of August 18th, so kind of mid-August bond pricing. And then after we get the pricing, again, that's met all the parameters, that would be sent down to the AG's office, their office reviews all of the public bond issuances in Texas, and that's roughly about a 30-day process. And so that's where you see the bond pricing, August 18th, and then roughly September 17th, that's when you have funds in the bank. So with that, I'd certainly be happy to answer any questions you may have, and go into more detail as you would like.
I'll open it up to the board, seeing if one has any questions, GB.
I just think for public information, Dr. Farmer, we might want to say how much of that bond issue we think will go to the new center. What are we estimating the center to cost?
Do you have a number on that?
We had $100 million that we had requested, and there's fluctuations out there, you know, in costs and everything, but we came back to them. The cost of issuance, you might discuss that with them, Jason, because that can fluctuate, and we wanted to be sure we got the $100,000, $100 million there to build the building with, and that's what we've been operating off of.
Certainly.
What is our architect projecting that the cost of the new student center will be?
When will it start?
What is the cost that the architect?
We have been working off of the $100 million figure.
They're projecting that the center's going to cost $100 million?
Yes.
Okay.
We have, it has gone over that at times, but we've worked with them to try to get it back to the $100 million.
So the public will understand that when they have a $100 million bond, it's going to build a $100 million building. You have anything to add, sir?
I'd be happy to address the cost of issuance. So the nice thing about this is all the cost will be wrapped into the bond. We should be able, or what we're anticipating based off of rates now, is that we can deliver the full $100 million for construction. So to Dr. Cantrell's point, we'd be able to give that to the college, but all of the cost of issuance will be paid out of bond itself, so it doesn't come out of your general fund or any other funds that you have on hand.
Mr. Vick, do you have anything that you'd like?
I've had a chance to examine this, and GB, I think it's important to note that this is not the issuance of a bond like a school board's going to issue a bond, and tax rate's going to be affected, anything like that. This is all secured not by tax dollars at all, but by other funds, including the tuition. But I did have a question about the cap on the rate that we're looking at.
5.75, yes.
Yeah, we're not looking at buying or selling these bonds. We're going into the market 5.75. We're looking at something significantly lower than that.
Yes, sir. Again, if we were to price today, I think we'd be right around the 5%.
And to just follow up on Mr. Vick's comment, the security behind these bonds, address that for the public, please.
Yes, sir. So once again, you were exactly correct. So these are not ad lorm or property tax-based, these are combined fee revenue bonds. So you have tuition as well as other fees, such as from your auxiliary enterprise system and things of that nature, as well as the fee that you introduced and started collecting in January of this year. Those are the sole revenues that will be used and repaid with this, so no tax rate impact because of this bond.
That's the point.
Yes, sir.
I clearly, I think Mr. Vick was clearly wanting to make.
Absolutely.
Are there any other questions or comments from the members of the board? Having said that, I think we would call for a motion that would say the Board of Trustees approve the order authorizing the issuance of the Parker County Junior College District Consolidated Fund Revenue Bonds Series 2025, and appoint the president and the executive vice president for Financial and Administrative Affairs of Weatherford College, each as pricing officers, to effectuate the sale of the Series 2025 Consolidated Fund Revenue Bonds. Do I have a motion from a member of the board to that effect? Mr. Vick, do I have a second?
Second.
Ms. Liva, all right? All in favor of that motion and second, please raise your hand. It is a unanimous decision, so approved. Thank you, sir. Thank you for explaining what you have for us today.
Yes, sir. Thank you.
Anything else, Mr. Marlet? If you have some. Okay, got it. All right, thank you, sir. The next item on the posted agenda is item number seven, the various reports from Dr. Farmer.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Provided in your book, you have the Wise County Academics and Student Services Updates, and Dr. Cantrell and her team have been working very diligently on our budget. We have some meetings coming up in August. At this time, I don't believe you have anything significant to share with the board, do you? If you do, I'd give you the floor.
No, not at this time.
Okay, so we'll be coming back to you with more details, but things are looking very good at the moment. So moving to Agenda Item 7C, it is my privilege to invite Jeff Lightfoot, our former record-setting baseball head coach, and now our current athletic director, to the podium. While he's making his way up to the podium, I would like to publicly remind the audience and the Board of Trustees that Coach Lightfoot passed a career landmark this season as he accumulated 900 wins. So at this time, I would ask you to join me.
Thank you, I appreciate it. I'm stealing some of my thunder there.
Well, before you get going, I'm going to steal more of your thunder. If that didn't rock your world, this will. I'm going to ask you to come up here, please, and I'm going to ask Board Chairman Dan Carney to join me at the front. In addition to that 900-win career landmark, I'll wait till Mr. Carney gets up here. It is my honor to let you know that Jeff Lightfoot has been nominated and has officially been inducted into the NJCAA Hall of Fame.
Wow.
And I'm supposed to give a presentation after that.
I'd like to start by introducing my new assistant athletic director. A lot of you know Coach Kylie May as a very successful volleyball coach, and she's going to be having some additional duties as assistant athletic director. Excited to add her to the leadership team. Y'all get, Coach May is here. I'm going to start with culture today, and specifically championship culture. I think if you ask a lot of different coaches, you'd probably get a lot of different answers on what culture looks like. And over the years, I've changed my definition and tweaked it, but ultimately, I came up with this over the last couple of years. Championship culture is a culture of selfless individuals driven to achieve greatness in all endeavors, an atmosphere that values and encourages trust, character, and accountability, and has no tolerance for those who don't. We have a championship culture here with all of our programs. And when I say in all endeavors, I want to start without academics, because I don't think you can be champions on the field without being champions off of it. So I want to give you a rundown a little bit about what we accomplished academically this year. Roughly 230 student athletes, that equals about 3,300 hours taken. So we're filling up our classrooms here on campus. Forty-two academic all-conference selections, 16 rodeo athletes earned NIRA Scholar Awards, 62 student athletes submitted for the NJCAA All-American Team, and every program had a team GPA over 3.0. I wasn't sure if applause was going to need a prompt or not, but that's impressive. Needless to say, I put all the GPAs there at the bottom for you to look at. You can have championship on the field without having championships off the field, and that goes for the classroom, the weight room, the dorm, all of those above, and it led to a successful season off the field as well, or on the field as well. Like to highlight some of those accomplishments. Starting with volleyball, 30 wins in conference, 30 wins total, conference champions for the third year in a row, and they swept conference this year, went undefeated in conference play, earned an at-large bid to the national tournament, in which they went 3-1 and got ninth, ending up with a national ranking of ninth overall, and they were as high as fifth this year throughout the season. Both our basketball teams qualified for postseason play. Baseball team had a successful season, 48 wins, conference champs for the third year in a row, hosted a regional series at home, where we swept El Paso, lost in the superregional final, finished ranked number three in the country, and we were number one for several weeks in a row. Softball, 33 wins, qualified for the regional tournament, ranked 20th at the end of the year, but they were as high as number 12. Both men's and women's tennis programs were national qualifiers this year. Men's finished 11th, women's finished ninth. Men's and women's golf were both national qualifiers. Men finished 10th, and women finished 12th. Rodeo, as you know, had a great season, once again, sixth place in the top five in the region, two qualified for the NFR, two qualified for the National Steering Roping Finals. National champion roper and a reserve national champion in go-time. Like to highlight some of those natural recognitions. National champion roper, Caston Wydenbiner. I butchered that several times before, I got there. Reserve national champion go-time, J.C. Graf, eight out of 10 WC programs were nationally ranked this year. Very impressive. Seven All-Americans, I won't go through those individually, but certainly nice to get national recognition. It's important to note that going into this fall, we'll have over 60 student athletes that head to four-year universities to earn degrees. Highlight about different programs there. Coaches' recognitions. Coach Bob McKinley was honored with the NJCAA Coaches Legacy Award. As you mentioned, 900 wins there. Coaches of the Year recognition, Coach May in volleyball, myself in golf, and the men's and women's, Coach Renhak and Coach Johnston. What's next for WC Athletics? We've got to continue our successful programs that we have now. Men's won those coaches, keeping great coaches. We've got great coaches on staff. We've got great coaches on staff right now, working hard to keep those coaches that we have and mentor them and make them better. Give our student athletes everything they need to thrive on the field and off the field, continue to divert resources to them, to make, put them in a good position to succeed. Evaluate our needs as a college and see what our direction is in terms of where are we going for programs next and potentially add programs in the future. Address facility needs, that's a continuing, ongoing process, whether it be upgrading our current facilities or potential new facilities on down the road. Addressing transportation needs, as Ms. Moore's talked about there, as we grow in our student athlete population, as grows our need for transportation and getting those student athletes where they need to be. And evaluating streamlined processes, whether that be in the business office or our NIL processes, LOI processes and all those things, just make sure that we're efficient and transparent. We want to be a leader in NJCAA NIL opportunities. That's something you're going to hear a little bit more out. As we go along in the coming months, NIL is name, image, and likeness. And if you're familiar with college sports at all at the NCAA level, it is transforming college athletics. It hasn't been a huge player at the junior college level. We have some small NIL deals in our athletic department, but nothing on a big scale, and that's something that we intend to improve on and be a leader in junior college athletics in. And then lastly, just to end with culture, you can't have a championship culture in your athletic programs without vision, without a championship mindset in your administration, championship mindset in your Board of Trustees, and you guys have delivered for our student athletes, and you've seen that success happen on the field and in the classroom. If you've got any questions, be happy to take them.
What year did you start, Coach? What year did you begin up here?
Nineteen, here was 2003, first spring year. I was at another school for a few years before that.
Well, you've been here for a long time.
Yes, sir.
You've done a quality job. I congratulate you on your new assistant AD back there. Stand up, Kylie.
I already did.
Give us, give us.
We're recovering from ACL surgery.
Give us about 15 seconds of background on Kylie May. Yeah.
How are you talking about myself? I was hired to start the program here and, you know, had some sense at the Division One level before this, but wanted to kind of have a better life balance, and Weatherford was giving me that. I took my six-month-old son on the road to every away tournament last year, and, you know, I wouldn't have been able to do that anywhere else. So I'm super excited to kind of be more invested in the program as a whole and hope to adopt as much as I can, but yeah, excited.
I think we're all very excited to have you join.
Thank you. Appreciate it. Look forward to the opportunity.
I'm glad you stopped or ended on NIL, and so you've had all this success this year with only $5 million in NIL to pay the athletes. What do you see the future of that for junior colleges?
Well, it's unknown, and that's something that we're diving into and seeing what the possibilities are. Obviously, at NCAA level, they have a whole level of donors and some avenues that we may not have. So just exploring those opportunities to see if we can possibly expand our NIL opportunities. Like I said, we have some small NIL opportunities now. For example, I had a diabetic player who was getting a free insulin pump from a company, you know, things like that.
So I've read through on the website about the NIL. Is that generating really any significant money?
Is it generating anybody forward? At the NCAA level, it's ridiculous.
No, I'm talking about Weatherford Junior Colleges.
Uh, significant.
Do you have volleyball players to come sign a letter to advertise?
I don't, I don't think it's been to the point where it's enticing players to come here yet.
Yeah.
But I would like to get to the point where it's a possible resource for us.
Do you think that's going to be in the future? We're going to be competing for athletes against junior colleges who are going to spend money like that?
I think it's a possibility. I know other schools are talking about it for sure.
And you're dissuading them for good.
I wish NIL wasn't a thing, for sure, but if it is, I want to be the best at it.
Thank you, Coach. We appreciate you.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Anything else? All right. Thank you, sir. I have number eight on the posted agenda is future agenda items and meetings, and I call upon President Farmer once again.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. On August 7th, we have two meetings, starting with a budget workshop scheduled at 12:30, followed at 1:30 by our regular August board meeting where we will propose the tax rate. Then on August 24th, we'll have a called meeting to hold a public tax hearing and to adopt the 2025-2026 budget and the 2025 ad lorm tax rate. Again, that will be 12:30 here in the community room of the Emerging and Technology Workforce Building.
Thank you, Dr. Farmer.
The first date was August 7th.
You said August 24th.
21st, I apologize. August 21st.
Thank you, sir. The next item is announcements. Mr. Baker, do you have some announcements?
I do, Mr. Chairman. Thank you very much. We have two fine arts productions coming up, starting this weekend. There's a children's production, it's called Snow White and Rose Red. It'll be this weekend and also next weekend at the Alkeck. And then the Marjorie Alkeck Musical will be Cinderella this year. That will start July 25th and run through August the 3rd. And I know how much our Assistant Athletic Director likes to be called on in public. Kylie, when is your first match for volleyball?
I thought you were going to ask if I was going to go. My four-year-old is going to go. Our first night is August 22nd, home tournament.
There you go.
Thanks very much. Appreciate it. We're down to the section of the posted agenda dealing with closed session on real property and employee matters. We are, time now is 1:43 PM. We will recess for our closed session at this time.
The time now is 2:38 PM. We're back in session after our close session consultations. We're down to agenda item number 11, possible actions with regard to real property. There are no action items. Item number 12 is consideration of possible action with regard to officers and employees, and there are no action items on that. Item number 13 is adjournment. Do I have a motion?
I don't move.
Second. Don't fight over it. We have a second. If we're all in favor, raise your hand. We are adjourned.